Close session.
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while unclosed session discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of stated Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion to convene in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Or none, Ms. Serza?
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Thank you, moving on to item 4.1, Ms. Serza, would you take the role, please?
We're not doing the public comment?
Sorry, 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 skip that. So, yes, moving on to 3.1, this is an opportunity for the community to speak to the CIP. It's my understanding there were no comments regarding the CIP, but we do have additional community input.
There's no comments about CIP?
Hello, now, Ms. Serza, would you call the role, please, item 4.1?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Dowell.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Ombi.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
And is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, will you, for those who might be looking at item 4.02, could you just explain that for a second, please, thank you.
Thank you, I'm looking at two agendas here. Yes, Ms. Hummel had planned to attend the meeting electronically, but as having connectivity issues, and so was able to attend closed session, but is not able to connect for this work session. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
You have a motion and a second.
Thank you, any discussion? Hearing none.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Yes.
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to 5.1, announcements and superintendent's report.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board members. My short report focuses on our return to learn forward WJCC schools plan. We will share the most recent health metrics later this evening. Understandably, everyone in our community has a different perspective about whether or not our students should be back in buildings for face-to-face learning. I want to assure you that we continue to meet weekly with Health Department officials, monitor the data, and rely on guidance from both the Virginia Department of Health and the Virginia Department of Education when determining our path forward. The situation is fluid at all times. This evening, I cannot begin to express my full appreciation for our students, families, and teachers. Fortunately, I have some help tonight. I would like to share part of an email that was sent to one of our elementary school art teachers, Ms. Deberry at DJ Montague. It reads, "I just want to tell you again what a fantastic art lesson you've put together. Liberty loves her so much and just kept saying how much she loves art now, and how proud she was. She loved her pumpkins so much that I found an old frame and framed it for her. Smiles for days. Your lessons are so engaging and they really want to work hard to impress you. Even my sixth grader does the lessons after his school time is over. Thank you so much for all you do. I know this cannot be an easy medium to teach art, but you are doing it with flying colors. The kids are engaged and can sense how much you care about them. I cannot tell you enough how much this means to see these smiles. Thank you." What a wonderful email, I couldn't have said it better myself. Thank you to Ms. Deberry, and thank you to all of our WJCC schools' teachers who are using every tool in their toolbox to engage and encourage our students. Whether they are teaching remotely or in person, our teachers are the absolute best. Madam Chair, that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you, I know there's an update for CAC, so we'll start there, and then if additional members have updates, follow them.
Thank you, Madam Chair, before I give my update on CAC, just if I might ask Dr. Heron to just, I think there was a decision from the city and the county regarding year-end spending, and just, could you just share with the public the results of that, please, just as a matter of an announcement, do you mind?
Sure, basically, on the year-end spending, the county and city both approved the plan. Part of it was for childcare, for teachers and other staff, which we'll be announcing very soon. Possibility of $50 per child per week, that we'll be running out some sort of a plan for that in the next couple of weeks. That's intended really for use when we get into Path 3 of our plan. Ms. Ewen can help me out as well here, we also had approval of money for curriculum development, digital curriculum, to be developed for second semester, to be used both for in-person learning and for remote learning. We also had approval for shields, for protective gear for our students at the secondary level. We already have some for elementary. And I think the final approval was for filters or air purifiers for a healthy environment.
All right, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I just thought the headline was, yay, they approved it, so that's all I was looking for, I'm sorry.
No problem.
So, yes, thanks, Madam Chair, the Special Education Advisory Committee met on October 8th, and the first item on the agenda was to thank the eight members that are rotating off, to thank them for their service, and then the committee talked a little bit about school board policies and inclusion, and what that means for the school division through, you know, efforts like multi- systems of support, and then they talked about next meeting and having an orientation for the new members, but it was a good meeting, and I look forward to the next meeting, which is November 12th.
Thank you, are there additional updates? Hearing none. Now moving on to citizen comments, it's my understanding we do have comments?
Fourth grade and seventh grade, I'm happy that the kindergarten is going back to school, however, I would like to see full day learning and not ending one hour earlier for the students. I would also think it's beneficial for the fourth graders to return to school in the next week or two, with plans to return middle and high school students before the year end, period, thank you, period.
Hi, my name is Tara Bowman, our daughter is on first stone house, and is in kindergarten, and we are just definitely very concerned about returning to learn at this time in person. We signed up for PAST thinking that no matter what the first nine weeks were secured as virtual, and now we've been forced to kind of reconsider this decision a little earlier than expected, we were hoping to have those additional weeks to see if the further we go into October, November, if cases are rising, if the school would then change their mind about returning to learn, because we don't think that in-person is right at this time. We're generally concerned about if a teacher is exposed and then must quarantine for two weeks, you know, the kids will then need to be virtual again, and it just seems like for long-term, that's to stay virtual until the crisis and pandemic is under control. Thanks.
My name is Michael Bowman, I am calling to express my concern about the return to school in-person plan that James City County has, due to the rise and the current trend of the rising numbers of COVID-19, and the lack of care that I see in which the community that we live in is taking towards mitigation of the virus and their exposure. I would strongly consider and suggest that you all reconsider, reassessing and looking to start in-person at a later date. Thank you.
Hi, I'm pleased to review your foreplay, my name is Eric Margiello, I'm a parent of an elementary and middle school student, my additional spouse is a teacher, I'm calling to make you aware of her experience and experience of other WJCC teachers. I'm concerned that K-3 students are going back to school, and I'm more concerned for teachers who cannot teach K-3, they're being required to report to school, or turn to meetings to teach virtually from their empty classrooms. Teachers have not been given a rationale for this requirement, and I'm formally requesting one today. My best guess is that this is an intent to equity, thinking that if some teachers have to be at school, all teachers should be at school. A truly equitable approach would have teachers report when in-person instructions happening. Everything else should be the individual teacher discretion and mom's a maintenance and virtual presence. I have a difficult common understanding, while we would never replace anyone in a potentially horrible situation, when job duty does not require it, it is negligence. I implore you to speak with teachers who are working more than ever, more stress than ever, and be at the risk for health, and this is impossible at all. Can you have the climate survey, do you go, do something, listen, act, and help to save our teachers?
I'm a student at Warhol High School, but I'd like to remain anonymous. I think we should probably just go to Path 3 or 4 as soon as the opportunity is given. Online learning is not working, teachers do not teach, we cannot get into lessons, lessons are not working, and people are missing out on so many things. We're missing out on opportunities to learn properly, be social, have access to counselors and the help that we need, where our mental health is going down because of the amount of work. The work rate has gone so far up that it's hard to handle, but teachers aren't teaching, some aren't even helping, grades are going down for many people.
Hi, my name is Kendall Garrett, and I am just calling to voice my concern with continuing with all virtual learning for our older children, specifically middle school and high school. The number of hours sitting docile in front of a computer is killing their creativity, it's making them lonely, it's making them depressed, they're missing friends, they're missing the socialization, and by the CDC's own voice, children are at very low risk to get it, and at some point, you know, we need to get out of our basements and our homes, our kids need other kids to be around, they need the socialization. We cannot continue this, you know, I understand that, you know, wellness together and two weeks to flatten the curve have now grown into seven months until, what, we have a vaccine, well, we've had a flu.
Hi, my name is Verla Paniotis, and I have a granddaughter in sixth grade at James Blair, and I just wanted to let you know that I've been helping her this week with her schoolwork for the first time, because her mom had to go back to work, she can't work from home anymore, she's a single mom, and I just can't believe the issues that we're having with just getting logging on and sending in assignments, and I had heard about it, but never experienced until this week. I just wondered if there's any way that you all would consider just doing PAST fail, or at least, no, high school can't do it, but middle school, she's doing poorly and is normally a good student, I'm just not sure what the answer is, and everybody's tried, but anyway, that's my input, thank you.
Hello, my name is Madison Liebler, and I'm an 11th grade student at Jamestown High School. I'm a hardworking student, and I have above a 4.0 GPA, I'm currently taking five AP classes. I am calling to express my concern with the way our school is being conducted. I believe that the system currently in place is proving to be extremely detrimental, not only to our education as a whole, but also to our mental, emotional, and physical health. In my personal opinion, the biggest issue with the current system is it being virtual and a change from four semester classes to a-year-long classes. I do not know one person who is not suffering subsequent to the current system. The immense screen time comprised not only of our hours of classroom in the day, but also the multiple hours of homework each night is proving to be extremely overwhelming for all students. I leave from 3:00 to 8:00 to go to school and practice and work, and come home to do more homework for another three to four hours, thus leaving me possibly staying up till 1:00 AM doing work. My lack of time for sleep and rest, along with the lack of time I am left with for social interaction, is taking an extreme toll on my health. Being at home on the computer all day makes it extra.
Good evening, school board members, my name is Amy Barnes, and I'm calling to request that in-person school for all grade levels begin immediately. My preference would be to skip to Path 4 today, but I realize that will not be a popular option, so I'm pleading with you to move to Path 3 right away. I have a 10th grader at Jamestown, before COVID, she was a cheerful, happy, enthusiastic, straight A student who loved everything about school, and now that we are seven months into COVID, she's suffering, her grades are dropping, her attitude is apathetic, and there are frequent tears, she rarely leaves the house, doesn't see many faces other than mine and her dad's, and at this point, I'm far more concerned about her social, academic, and psychological health than I am about her physical health. I keep up with the COVID- I keep up with the COVID data, so I know that a continued closure of school in the d-
Kathy Pacheco. I am calling to ensure my perspective, if not fairly represented, is at least heard. I would like less attention and energy used on debating which phase we should be on, which quite frankly should be left up to medical experts, not boards nor politicians, and more time and resources focused on supporting high school teachers and students navigating through and finding balance in the change to A classes, which went into effect this year. Teachers are beyond exceeding my expectations on how they are managing to actually teach on the virtual platform, using tech that I'm sure was unfamiliar to them until this year. Because of our teachers, students are and will continue to excel regardless of the teaching platform. Where I do have some concerns and where I think the most agreement is found among all families is the struggle high school students are experiencing due to the change to an eight-year-long class schedule that, again, took effect just this year. In my opinion...
My name is Olivia Tulow. I'm a parent to two elementary students in the James City County School District, and it's extremely important to our family if you WJACC could hire and promote more diverse teachers of different backgrounds, in particular African-American and Latino. We want our children to be able to see themselves in the people who are teaching them, and it's just extremely important. We understand that my son's teacher is the only African-American teacher at the school that he attends, so we appreciate your initiative with that. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Jill Piles, James City County. I'm just calling about my 15-year-old. Virtual school did not work last spring, so we are homeschooling, but we are looking forward to when the school district is having in-class school. So that's what we vote for, in-person school. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Hi, my name is Carrie Henderson. I wanted to call and ask the school board members what resources are being used to make the decisions on reopening schools. Are you checking the Department of Health COVID dashboard? I check it daily, and I really feel like it gives you a feel for the pulse of COVID in our community. It will help you see that rates are low and our hospitalizations are even lower, with less than 10 hospitalizations total since July in the county. This week has seen an average of only three to four new cases daily in the county, and numbers in the city are, of course, much lower. I'm calling to ask that you please bring all of our struggling children back to school. My pediatrician believes it's safer to return, and the American Academy of Pediatrics released a document outlining the importance of children being back in school. Their document, called COVID-19 Planning Considerations, outlines the importance and gives excellent guidelines on how to do so safely. We follow their recommendations for child safety seat laws, helmet laws, and childhood vaccination recommendations, and I strongly believe we can be following their COVID recommendations for reopening schools. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Crystal Jackson. I have a seven-year-old daughter in elementary school in 2nd grade, and I want you all to know how much she is struggling with learning at school virtually through the computer, not seeing her friends, not being able to take advantage and be in school like she should be. It's the quotation "learning" that she is doing is nothing to compare to in-person. I hope you all consider looking at the real numbers of the area private schools that are all back in school. My son is in a preschool, four days a week, no problems, no issues. We need to get these kids back in school.
Hello, my name is Lauren Burton-Hart. I just wanted to say we are at the midpoint here of the first nine weeks, and my three children are still struggling with virtual learning. My elementary student is getting ready to go back to school, which we are so happy about because the decline she had was just terrible to see. She did an extra year of kindergarten, which, you know, she progressed so much, it was beautiful to see. And now, you know, I'd say she's like right back to that first year of kindergarten. I also have two boys in high school, and both of them are in tears, you know, almost on a daily basis. One who typically never needs help and takes AP classes honor roll is extremely overwhelmed.
Kay Grubel, 1717 Waverly Lane Lenexa. I'm a grandmother of a 4th grader, 5th grader. I work, I'm stemming in the soul, and I have to be able to keep my home and keep going. I'm having to work and homeschool these kids, and this is about to put me under the table if you need to send them to school. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Allison Sigler. I have three students in WJACC school, one in Matoka and two at Hornsby. I'm calling because I would like to request that we move to a blended model as soon as possible. My 4th grader is really struggling. I'm super happy you guys have K-3 to 3 back, but the 4th and 5th graders need to go back as well. So I just wanted to call and request that you move to a blended model for 4th and 5th grade, as well as middle school as soon as possible. Thank you.
It is completely unfair that grades are even being counted for elementary school students. Tests are being taken when parents can't even be there to make sure the children are comprehending the questions. And while other students may be having the answers spent to them by their parents while they're taking the test, it's completely unfair that anything should be graded during this time. Everything should be incomplete or not complete.
I'm a healthcare worker. My husband is an essential retail worker. We have been working throughout this entire time of COVID with three elementary school students having to pay exorbitant amounts of money for an 18-year-old babysitter to watch our four children. In our workplaces, in healthcare, in retail, there is successful management of COVID-19. People are out and about doing everything that they do on a daily basis. There is absolutely no reason that the school system should still be shut down or coming back at only two days a week. Our kids are expected to be on virtual learning from 8:30 to 3:30 every day while we're working, and when they go back to school, they're going to be having an early dismissal one hour early. And we are expected to be providing more school on our school days at home than the school system even is going to be providing on their two-days-a-week set again. Furthermore, the grading practices are completely unfair. Kids, my kids are-
Hi, my name is Christina King. I'm calling on behalf of my home and many others. We have, I have three children specifically. I have five that are here in my home for learning. We have had many issues with the virtual learning, as well as being able to log on, issues regarding communication with teachers, guidance counselors, trying to make some changes and find some way to better the instructional time for our students, concerning frustration, overwhelm. There needs to be some changes made to some leeway for these children during the crisis time. That is what I ask to be heard. Thanks.
Stephanie Hood. My youngest daughter is a 5th grader at Stonehouse Elementary School. I would like for you to consider, please, allowing 4th and 5th graders back into the classroom at least two days a week. She is very distracted. We're having a hard time getting her to focus, and I do believe that schools for this age group, at least some instruction face-to-face, would be very beneficial. Thank you.
Catherine Spencer. I'm just calling on behalf of my 7th grader. This virtual learning is good, but we need to get our kids back in school. I work nine hours a day to come home and spend three hours trying to help my kids do their homework and learn their classes on the nights that are getting marked late because she didn't understand what she was doing. They need to be able to ask their teachers questions, raise their hands, talk to the students, and work together on this. We need to get our kids back in school. Please, get our kids back in school. They're having headaches, they're getting sick, they're having anxiety. They need to get back in school. Please, get them back in school.
Hello, my name is Daniel Corbett. I wanted to voice my opinion that we should open the schools back up, that the kids should be going back in. Schools around the nation are opening up, and a lot of the more recent research has showed that resurgence amongst younger kids is not a high-level concern. I think there's more concern with kids not having a social environment, and it is my opinion that the schools should be opening back up immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, citizens. Four, adding your comments and your feedback to the division. Moving on to proposed agenda items. The first agenda item is also an action item tonight, FY21 grants budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Ewing is going to present this item tonight, where we're adding some more grants funding into the grants budget.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. This agenda item is to amend our grants budget to reflect additional grant awards that have been received through the CARES funding. The following grants are from the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, or ESER, Special Education Services and Supports in the amount of $53,659. Summer Academic Academy in the amount of $35,000. Instructional Delivery Supports in the amount of $26,109. Cleaning and sanitizing supplies for schools and school buses in the amount of $17,104. And facilities upgrades in the amount of $22,444. Governor's Emergency Education Relief, or GEAR Fund, also provided the Virginia Initiative to Support Internet Outside of School Networks, or VISION, grant in the amount of $106,245. Coronavirus Relief Funds were also recently allocated directly to school divisions based on ADM to help cover costs in preparing for, responding to, and mitigating the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. Our allocation totals $1,999,270. These particular funds do have a spending deadline of December 30th of this year. Combined, these additional grant awards total $2259,831, which will bring our total grants fund budget to $11,407,931. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have questions for Ms. Ewing?
Thank you. Ms. Ewing, is the coronavirus relief funds for 1.9 million, is that the only one with a deadline, or do the other ones have deadlines as well? The other ones are good through September of 2022. It's just the coronavirus relief funds are through this December, just like the coronavirus relief funds that we received directly from the county and city that we had to spend by December 30th. And do you, just for, I think you've already answered this, but just for the public information, is there any potential overlap between the coronavirus relief funds, or any of these grants for that matter, and the year-end spending requests that was just approved? Any potential overlap there? Yes, there are some items in our spending plan request that we may be diverting and using these funds for. We will use these funds first. We would use these funds first. Thank you.
I could just add, part of that is dependent upon some of the items being received before the deadline, but yes, we'll make every attempt to use them for at least two of the end-of-year requests.
Additional questions, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, can you just remind us with the, with just a broad category of what these funds are going to be used for as far as ed services and the facility upgrades?
So the facility upgrades, so most of these grants we did have to apply for. There were some that were formula-driven and also related to LCI. The facility upgrades, we would be looking to get the MIR filters and the air purifiers. The cleaning supplies is just cleaning supplies for the buildings and the schools. The sped services and supports would be utilized to provide supplemental special education and related services to students to assist with mitigating academic and behavioral skill deficits that may have resulted from the school closure since March. And the instructional delivery supports, we're looking at an online reading program subscription to assist students.
Okay, thank you.
I could just add, most of those were competitive grants that we had an opportunity to apply for, and we got some of the funds, and others we got more, depending on the grant. Apply for everything.
Sure.
Additional questions for Ms. Ewing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I understand that there's a December 30th deadline on the coronavirus relief funds. Do you anticipate that we'll be able to take advantage of that full grant, or?
We do. Our original CARES award that we got back in the spring for 1.1 million, those expenditures, we plan to divert to this funding source that has the earlier spending deadline. So we do anticipate being able to utilize all those funds.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Ewing. As I mentioned, this will be an action item later this evening. So moving on to item 7.2, Temporary Authority for Purchase Over $100,000. This is also an action item tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This actually relates to the purchase or the spending related to the coronavirus relief funds, and Ms. Ewing is going to mention the item tonight and talk about it.
Yes, so Policy DJ requires purchases over $100,000 to be approved by the school board prior to the purchase being made. So this request before you this evening is to give temporary authority to the superintendent to approve purchases over $100,000 specifically for purchases utilizing the recently awarded coronavirus relief funds, so that we can meet that deadline of spending by December 30th.
Have questions or comments?
So when we make a motion, we'll say for the coronavirus relief fund? And is there, that gives the superintendent the authority through December 30th? As far as reporting back to the superintendent, the school board, what those funds are for? Is there some guidelines about when it should be reported to us of what the money was spent for?
We can include that in our monthly financial report.
Okay, I think that would be helpful.
Mr. Kelly's question just, so is there any, the qualifier of four coronavirus relief funds, because that's not how it's written in the action item, so I just wanted to, is there any reason to not include that qualifier? Is there anything that's time-sensitive? I understand that the grant, spending the grant is time-sensitive, but is there anything on the procurement side of something that's time-sensitive that if you waited, we wouldn't get it because another division got it? You know, so in other words, it might not be that money, but one of these other grants that would be time-sensitive on the procurement side where the delay and having to come through the board would negatively impact your ability to do business?
I don't think we're aware of anything at this time, because generally we plan ahead, and all the other grant funds, there is a time, there's significant time to get the items associated with those. So I believe just the temporary authority for the CARES Act funding would be approved.
Was it coronavirus relief funds, or is it the CARES Act?
It's the coronavirus relief funds.
Okay, so it's not the CARES Act. Now, we could say it's do both, that helps. I just don't want to give the whole, I just want to make sure that we're maintaining our fiduciary responsibility. So we could say that the $100,000 for coronavirus relief and/or CARES set aside, we could do both of those. That just helps to be more inclusive, but if you don't think it's necessary, we don't.
The CARES Act funding doesn't have to be expended by December 30th, so I don't think there's the same narrow-
Right. But Mrs. Cook's question was, does it impact your ability to utilize it so that we use those funds? Although there's only one that's over $100,000, and I don't know if you can spend it all in one purchase order, but-
Yeah, fair enough. I'm not sure about the details of that purchase, so it may be helpful to include the CARES set aside in the terminology. I just don't want to overly qualify this. If we're going to provide that leeway, which I think we should, particularly if it's included in the financial reports that we're adopting independently with each meeting each month, I just don't want to overly qualify that motion to tie your hands too much, given that this is a dynamic situation.
When we move, we'll move for the CARES Act and the coronavirus relief.
I think so. Dr. Beers, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, I'm looking at the date, that date, December 30th. Does the money have to be spent, or does it just simply have to be encumbered?
It has to be spent.
Actually, yes, it is.
Yes, sir.
So get started.
We've actually got to certify that we will spend it by November 15th, and certify that and send that to the State Department, and if we can't, we've got to send the money back again.
back again.
But even if, you know, if we wanted to order some of those things and they get, you know, and they get backlog, we, yeah, we don't get a break on that.
Goods or services have to be received by December 30th. There's small leeway, since that is holiday time, we could write a check maybe early January, but the webinar I attended today, they need to be spent by December 30th.
Any additional questions for Ms. Ewing?
What?
Are there no additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Okay, moving on to the Consent Agenda. 8.1 Approval of Minutes from September 15 and October 6 meetings. And Personnel Actions, 8.3 Review Policy EBC. School Closings, 8.4 Revised Policy JL Student Fundraising Activities. Item 8.5 Resolution R-18-20 National Schools Psychology Week. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Your second? Any discussion? Are there none, Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook? Aye. Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Moving on to Action Items. 9.1 Financial Report Monthly Bills and Payroll for September. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the financial report and monthly bills and payroll for the month ended September 30th, 2020.
Second?
Second.
Question? Are there none, Ms. Serza?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Item 9.2, is there a motion to amend FY 21 Grants Budget?
Madam Chair, I move we amend the Grants Fund Budget to a total of $11,407,931.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Question? Are there none, Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Young? Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly, would you move 9.3 Temporary Authority for Purchase Over $100,000?
Madam Chair, I move we approve temporary authority to the Superintendent for purchases over $100,000 through December 30, 2020 for CARES Act funding and Coronavirus Relief funding.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Very good. Are there none, Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Item 9.4, Ms. Young, would you please move we appoint 21st Century Career and Ready Advisory Committee new members?
Yes, I will, Madam Chair. Okay, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the appointments of the following citizens to the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee for a two-year term ending October 31st, 2022. John Arzinski, Christine Hutto, Dwayne Jenkins, Roberta Lantham, Sunny Lee, William Mann, Heather McLaughlin, Kate Sykes, and Alexis Swanson.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Are there none, Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
And it's my understanding all new committee members for all of our committees will receive a letter of welcome, and those who have served and have moved on will also receive a letter of thanks for their time and effort while serving our committees. Item 9.5, Mr. Dow, would you please move that we appoint students to the Advisory Committee?
Madam Chair, I do move that we appoint the following students to the Student Advisory Committee for the following terms. Noel Sully, June 2021. Anthony Garberino, June 2022. Allison King, June 2022. Madison Walk, June 2022. Matthew Preston, June 2022. And Priya Subramanian, June 2022. I should know that name, she's a friend of my daughter. I apologize, Priya.
Thank you, Mr. Dow, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Are there none, Ms. Serza?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
And Item 9.6, Ms. Cook, would you please move that we appoint committee members to the Special Education Advisory Committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the School Board approve appointments of the following citizens to the Special Education Advisory Committee for terms ending October 31st, 2022. Joel Byrd, John Carr, Christine Conan, Beth Dix, Carrie Grenader, William Haywood, Angelica Hurst, Cynthia Johnson, Amanda Keller, Elizabeth Niles, Ellen Plaskin, Melanie Robinson, Joanne Stevens, and Michael Willen. Oops, sorry.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Are there none, Ms.?
Mrs. Young? Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Moving on to Item 9.7, Dominion Energy Electric Bus Initiative and Purchase. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the approval of the purchase of four electric school buses from Sunny Merriman in the amount of $484,000.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young, any discussion?
So, these buses are for the Dominion Energy Grant, right?
That's correct, sir.
And so, future purchases, I just want to make sure that we're doing the right things financially and have an appropriate return on investment there, and so, I want to make sure that we're just doing the right thing with the taxpayers' money.
It's my understanding we will get an update on this experience.
Yes, we're hoping to put metrics in place to measure their effectiveness over time, and we'll wait to have some of that data before we buy additional electric buses. We certainly will apply for the grant again so that the extra money is paid for, and obviously be able to get them that way, too.
That certainly helps the ROI.
So, we have a motion, was there a second? Discussion? Serza?
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Kelly, I'm sorry, Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Okay, information and discussion items. Item 10.1, Dr. Beers, would you please introduce our speakers who are, oh, wait, oh, wait, do you want to say something? Dr. Beers, for WHRO.
Oh, they're, okay, they're here, oh, gosh. Well, we'd like to welcome Bert Schmidt, the WHRO's President and Chief Executive Officer, and Elmer Seward, who is the, sorry, Elmer, I'm trying to get my.
Elmer will not be here tonight, Jean. Sorry.
Elmer won't be here. Oh, gosh.
It's his.
Good to see you.
Madam Chair, Dr. Heron, members of the Board, thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight. If you have not met me before, my name is Bert Schmidt, I'm the President and CEO of WHRO, and I come to you every other year because you're one of the 21 school divisions that literally own WHRO. Now, normally in these reports, I would go through the impact statement we provide you. It's in Board Docs. I am not going to go through those details this year because we've had such a unique year, but that 27-page report is available for you if you can't sleep at night and want to go through it all. But we do want to talk about the impact COVID has had on all of us and the reaction that WHRO has given to the COVID situation. First, again, the 21 divisions I mentioned, WJCC came on board, I think it was 2001, thank to Dr. Beers' wife, who was Superintendent at the time. We just added Middlesex and Surrey last summer, so we're up to 21 divisions. We started with two school divisions, Hampton and Norfolk, back in 1961, when they created Home Room 1, which is what WHRO stands for, is Home Room 1, and so now we're up to 21 divisions. So, when COVID hit back in March, the school superintendents came to me and they said, "Look, you know, we kind of have high school figured out with online, and even middle school, but our youngest kids are going to have a really difficult time with online learning, and WHRO, can you help us figure something out?" And then, the Department of Education came to us, Dr. Lane reached out and said, "There are a lot of kids that simply don't have good internet access, and hey, public TV, since everybody can get public television, can you help us as well?" And so, we came up with what we called VATV Classroom. VATV Classroom is where we have worked with a bunch of regional teachers. They have done Zoom lessons, they provide them to us, we turn them into a TV program, and since late March, we have on our main channel, Channel 15, from, depending on whether it was spring or fall, from 11 to 3 or so, been airing teacher Zoom lessons every weekday on WHRO. And we're pleased to say that all of the Virginia public TV stations, Washington, Richmond, as well as Roanoke, they've all carried VATV Classroom, both the spring semester, a repeat over the summer, and then into this school year as well. So, VATV Classroom has proved quite popular, and here's a quick video, shows what it's all about. There you go.
Attention, parents and students. Virginia TV Classroom is making it easy again for you to learn in your living room. We're back for season two. Students kindergarten to seventh grade tune in weekdays to see teacher-led and SOL-like instruction. It's Virginia's Teachers Teaching on TV. Watch Virginia TV Classroom and learn more.
Beginning September 14, 11, on WHRO.
I should mention that all of those lessons, if you didn't happen to watch it live, they are available in our eMedia VA system, so they're all correlated to the Virginia Standards of Learning, so they can be used any time of the year, grades K through 7 primarily. There's some 8, 9, and 10, and there's also some AP review as well. So, eMedia VA, I've mentioned in the past, we have a contract with the Department of Education to provide this service statewide for free for every division. We have 178,000 user accounts, we have over 160,000, what we call learning objects, digital learning objects, anything that you can digitize, could be a video, an audio, game, lesson plan, picture, app, whatever it may be. Every item is correlated to the Virginia Standards of Learning. We partner with national organizations like the Smithsonian, Library of Congress, of course PBS and NPR, and then tons of Virginia-centric organizations that have great digital content, and we put them all in the one place, so it's very easy for a teacher, for a student, for a parent to find items correlated to the standard that's being taught at that time. During COVID, we've seen dramatic increase in usage. In fact, I know in Williamsburg alone, it was used 10,000 times this past COVID experience. Here's a quick sampling of eMedia.
EMedia VA is Virginia's premier digital content library, offering 160,000 effective online learning objects for students K through 12. Teachers and parents enhance students' coursework and confidence today at emediava.org.
Again, a free service for every public school in the state, really, public, private, and home-schooler. We make sure eMedia VA is integrated into your systems as well. We have a learning tool, Interopability. We work with Canvas, we're going to be working with Schoology and Class Link, and we're doing a lot of training. We've had over 1,200 Virginia educators that have been part of the training for eMedia VA. Again, as online learning's really grown since COVID, a lot of teachers who never did online learning had to learn how to do it online, and eMedia VA's been a great tool for them. We started a little, a fun little service for our youngest children. We have a contest called the PBS Kids Writers Contest, where children K through 5 write and illustrate stories. We've taken those stories and our Education Service Director, Martha Fraser, she reads these stories on Facebook Live every Friday. They've become so popular, we get about 6,000 people a week that watch these, so we're going to continue it. It's just a chance for our youngest children to have a story read to them, and it's nice to read stories that young children wrote and illustrated, so it's a fun little thing on Facebook every Friday. And of course, those are archived, if you don't see them Friday, they're available anytime to go and look at. We do a lot of training, we've done special topic forums with Apple, we have, we have a PBS Teacher Line service where teachers can get graduate credit and recertifications. As I mentioned, we've done a lot of distance learning training recently. The schools have really been asking for that, so when we meet with the superintendents and the school board reps, it is, the number one request we get from them is professional development, and so we're really focused on that, continuing to be focused on that professional development. You all probably know that WHRO has built for you 27 online high school courses. Think of us as the manufacturer, here's the list. We make them, we give them to you, and you use them however you see fit. They're your courses to work within your learning management system, and whether it's all at home, you know, we've got the flip, the blended, the various models, and they are all expected to be used with teachers. These are not just standalone, take a course, it is done with teachers, and of course, we do a lot of training around these courses. And of course, we want to make sure that the quality is the highest, so we make sure that they are reviewed by independent reviewers, make sure that these courses are the highest quality out there. You're familiar with Virtual Virginia, these are the Advanced Placement World Language Programs. WHRO worked with the DOE 14 years ago to start Virtual Virginia. Today, we operate the tech side of Virtual Virginia, the help desk, all the technology, the website, those kind of things. Of course, a big jump in Virtual Virginia with COVID, as you would expect. Does it work? Let me push the button, that's, thank you. So, while this wasn't last year, you should be aware of it. The Governor's Office and Department of Education asked WHRO to help produce the state's first African-American history course. That course is produced, it is being taught by 20 experienced teachers in 16 different school divisions, you can see the list there. It is intended to be taught by experienced teachers in this space, that's why the first year is being done, because there's frankly not a lot of experienced teachers in teaching African-American history. It will be available to every school division next year, so just keep that in mind, that if you want to offer this, it will be available for the next school year, and we're very pleased to be able, it's a full-year elective course, so. Had more questions about that, happy to get into that with you. We provide a lot of services for our youngest children, of course, the TV station, as you'd expect. We have a writers' contest. Again, I mentioned that earlier, kids write and illustrate their stories, they submit them, we have judges, and then we have a celebration. Normally, it's a TV show, this is going to be a virtual celebration in a few weeks where the best kids, K through 5, get their stories read online, well, normally on the air, but this time, online. The spelling bee, we've been doing for 14 years. I will tell you, there will be a spelling bee this year, we weren't sure about that. So, your students in your buildings, grades 6 through 8, can do a bee, and we can provide the information, I believe it was sent, I'm not sure if it was sent to Dr. Heron or to the assistant supers or where it was sent, but Scripps has the information on how to do your, it will be a virtual spelling bee done fairly soon, in the next few months, and then the winners will be part of the regional bee that we host. We don't know the details of how that will be worked out, but it will be next February, and then the winner of that bee goes on to the national spelling bee. I will tell you, last year, Faith Stumpf from Berkeley Middle School came in third in the spelling bee, so hopefully you'll do even better next year with maybe a first-place winner. And those of you who've been around a while may be familiar with the Great Computer Challenge. We've been doing this for, I think this is going to be the 35th anniversary coming up, where kids, grades K through 12, they form teams, and they compete in various software programs. And so, this is generally a weekend on the campus of ODU. We did the senior division this past year, and the junior division got canceled because of COVID. Not sure what's going to happen for this spring, we're just, like everybody else, kind of playing, playing the world by ear at this point, whether it's in person, virtual. For those of you who are of a certain age, you'll recall Schoolhouse Rock videos back in the day where you would learn civic lessons. WHRO has created similar videos, working with local musicians. We did a whole series on health called Health Beats, and now we're releasing a series of videos on the environment called Green Beats. I'll do a quick little sampling of that. I won't go through the whole three-minute video, but you get the point. These videos can be used in whatever format you want, they're available through our FTP site. I would have said through your morning announcements, but, you know, maybe at some point when your kids are coming back, you can use these as a way to teach both health and now environmental. and now environmental issues. We have three vans that go out, and they haven't gone out a lot lately, but we are willing to talk to folks about if they want to do it in a safe way. We have... You'll see pictures of our literacy van. It's that blue van to the top left. We also have a STEM van that goes out and teaches STEM topics. And in the shop right now, ready to roll out, hopefully soon, is our environmental science van. So we will have three vans that will work with our youngest children throughout the region to help teach areas of literacy, STEM, and environmental science. And let's see. So of course, we do lots of other services. Your report has three pages of the services we provide for our early learners, so I won't go through all of that, but things like First Book and all sorts of activities that we get involved with the schools. Details are in your report. Clicker. And the school board members, what you really care about is your return on investment. On page 13, the investment that you make to WHRO was about $28,000 last year. Your savings in value was $598,000. That is a 20-to-1 return on your investment. We hope you're happy with that. And I would be remiss if I didn't say... I wanted to especially acknowledge Dr. Beers. Jim was the chair of our education board for the past two years. And so, Dr. Beers, it was a great pleasure working with you for those two years. He passed the gavel on July 1st to the Gloucester representative, but he still is our... The Williamsburg representative at our meeting. So thank you for that again. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions, comments, feedback for Bert Cook?
Thank you for being here, Mr. Schmidt. I always look forward to your visits every other year. And I really appreciate, in particular, your really quick response in the spring to putting content online for people to access, for students and families to access, when things were, you know, stopped so abruptly, so everybody was able to continue their learning. So that was really appreciated. And I also wanted to extend thanks to Dr. Beers for serving and representing this division so ably. Really appreciate that. WHRO is a real gem, and we're very, very lucky to have it. And even though you've monetized our return on investment, I think it's far more than that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kelly?
Yeah, I'm glad you stopped the little ditty, because I might have been singing that tonight when I went to bed. And I'd just like to echo what Mrs. Cook said. You know, having WHRO in the community and really in the state has been just such a blessing this year, in particular with all the challenges that education has faced. And so it's really just incredible to have that resource available to our students and our families and our teachers. I just appreciate that.
Yeah, I have to say, having gone to those meetings the last few years, what is amazing is how much you are actually... How much you actually are able to produce together in such a short amount of time, Bert. I don't... They must work 48 hours a day.
I crack that whip hard, you know?
They really... And I know other, you know, other PBS, you know, folks from around the country have come and see how you do this. Because you're... This really, in terms of educational opportunities and the kinds of activities you put together, it really... You have no... There's no match. Really, I remember years ago, when the decision was made to really move in this direction. You really did, and proof is in the pudding. And a number of teachers and students were able to benefit from that. Phenomenal.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Beers, Ms. Cook?
Yeah, may I? Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Schmidt, thank you for the presentation. This is my first time seeing this and really becoming aware of how much of a resource WHRO is for our community and for our students and families, especially our parents. And we've heard from a lot of our parents tonight, and I hope that they got to see what's available to them. So I appreciate that presentation. You gave me a lot to chew on as far as the digital media that is available. And I think I'm going to be reaching out to Dr. Beers. I think he's my closest contact. I can fill some answers for me. But thank you for being here, and thanks for the presentation.
You're more than welcome to reach out directly to me as well with any questions.
I just want to thank you. Thank you for being here tonight and taking your time to present. Being an elementary school teacher, I really like those little sing-songy kind of things. So I wish you would have shown more of that, because that's right up my alley. But thank you very much.
I've got a whole library. I could spend a long time showing you those videos. We can send a link to the whole series.
Oh, I might take you up on that, especially for shutdown again. And thank Dr. Beers also for his service, working with you. I know he's an asset.
Absolutely.
I have just one more question, Bert. I'm really excited about that African-American history course for the high school students. Is there... Will there be a chance sometime in the future, if maybe some post-high school folks like myself could sign up for a course like that? Because I just think, you know, hearing some of the things that I've heard about it, it's well worth taking the time to go through it.
So this is the first course that we've made that is actually going to be owned by the Department of Education. And that question's come up a number of times. And their position is, because of the sensitive nature of the content, they really want a teacher that's experienced teaching. They just don't want people just randomly going in and taking it, because they have to understand context. So they have said basically... I mean, we can do demonstrations, and I think you've seen demonstrations from...
Maybe we could maybe audit a course that's actually being taught.
I would have to check with Department of Education about that to see how they feel about that. Again, next school year, you're going to have it. So you're going to have more, you know, to be able to use it. They're very... All very tight right now with these 20 teachers, just because they've all been through it and...
Sure, I understand that.
Yeah, Mr. Schmidt, it would be great if you could send a link to the Health Beats and Green Beats to the board. I think they... Particularly Mrs. Young, I think, would really like it. But also, and I don't want to put you on the spot, and you may not be prepared to answer this, so please feel free to, you know, take a pass. But while everyone was talking, it occurred to me there was another piece, interactive piece, that you... Your team developed with some people here on the ground at WJCC on decision-making, a virtual reality decision-making module.
Yes, yeah. That was two years ago, so it wasn't in this year's report.
Right, but it was supposed to roll out this year, but got... Didn't because of COVID, so...
Thanks to your help, I should say, the foundation's help. So this was a virtual reality experience where kids would be immersed in real-life situations, and they had to make decisions around alcohol, drugs, things like that. And depending on where you went, and it was... You wore... Either you'd use your phone, or you could wear like the whole headset. You go to a party, you took the beer, you didn't take the beer, you smoked the joint, you didn't... All these decisions. And you might be fine, you might be in the hospital. In one scenario, you actually die. So but it's... And frankly, that is a good experience for parents as well, because you don't realize what your children are really facing when they're out there. High school kids going to parties and what they're really... It woke me up, frankly, to have some conversations with my kids about what they've experienced. And you're surprised about what they go through.
The only comment I would have is it was... It's really wonderful content, and I would recommend it to everybody. And I think you can send a link to that as well. The only comment I'd have is I think the mom was like a little too calm. I think most moms maybe wouldn't have been that calm.
Additional comments?
Thank you so much for coming. It's clear it's such a resource we have in this community. And I also wanted to thank Dr. Beers for serving on that committee. I was excited about the Green Beats, and I could have listened to the entire song. I'm looking forward to that link.
We'll make sure you get poop the scoop amongst the other ones.
Oh, good.
Scoop the poop.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to item 10.2, Discussion on Capital Improvement Plan. This is really just a placeholder. Dr. Heron will present her recommendations at the first November meeting. Unless folks have something burning right now, we'll discuss this fully at the first meeting in November. Okay, and then item 10.3, Return to Learn. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've just got a very short update on Return to Learn this evening. And Mr. Keever, our chief operating officer, is going to present the information, including looking at the most recent dashboard. Thank you, Mr. Keever.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Heron. On behalf of the senior leadership team, we are pleased to offer tonight's Return to Learn update that is primarily focused on new data released today by the Virginia Department of Health, which puts WJCC schools in the highest risk of transmission in one of the core indicator areas. As mentioned previously at our last meeting, the WJCC Schools COVID-19 Dashboard is designed to synthesize information from the CDC, Health Department, and Virginia Department of Education for families, students, and staff. Located on our website, wjccschools.org, the dashboard is updated daily, Monday through Friday, with data directly from the Virginia Department of Health. You recall that there are five levels for risk of transmission in schools, seen here on the chart, from lowest, which is the dark green, to highest, which is the red. The first two primary indicators are reported daily by the Health Department. Here is the most recent data for James City County and Williamsburg. The numbers represent the cases and percent positive, while the colors of the blocks correspond to the CDC's levels for risk of transmission in schools. You can see here that James City County is at the higher risk for total number of cases and the lowest risk level based on the percent positive for testing. Williamsburg is at the higher risk for the number of cases and the highest risk level when looking at the percent of positive cases. That information changed today, when the information was updated by Virginia Department of Health. The Division uses this data and recommendations from VDOE when deciding what path to be on and how many students should be in school. Another note about the dashboard. Since your last meeting, we've updated the database for our number of staff testing positive to COVID-19 to include the date the positive test was reported to the school division. This was done to provide further context for the cases that have been reported since July 1. Again, this is also updated daily. As you know, we are preparing to welcome students back in pre-K through 3rd grade as we transition to Path 2 on Monday, October 26. We continue to prepare buildings by setting up classrooms to remain socially distant to the greatest extent possible. That is one of our primary mitigation strategies. You see the others listed here on the screen, and we have shared them with you previously. I think it's important that we say them as often as possible. Daily symptom checks and self-assessment for wellness by staff before reporting to work. Parents are asked to assess their children for wellness before sending them to school. Use of face coverings by staff and students. Social distancing to the greatest extent possible and enhanced hygiene practices that include frequent handwashing. On the bus, students and staff must wear a face covering and practice social distancing. Windows will be open whenever possible to increase air circulation on the bus. And drivers intend to sanitize buses between each tier and thoroughly clean buses at the end of the morning and afternoon runs. Bus routes and stop information for Path 2, grades pre-K through 3, will be available for families tomorrow. They'll be posted online, and a link will be sent to elementary school families. Middle and high school runs and stops are not included. We are still working through what is operationally possible for transportation as we plan out moving to Path 3. And finally, to help our students stay healthy and keep learning, each child will receive a water bottle that can be refilled throughout the school day. Water fountains are currently turned off to keep the hands from using the same fountain and buttons and handles. Touchless refill stations and sinks can be used at each school to refill water bottles. As you can see, we continue to take forward steps and make progress in preparing to bring students back for in-person and blended learning. We are eager to welcome our pre-K through 3rd grade students to classrooms next week. We will give you an additional update on that transition at our next school board meeting. It's time we're prepared to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Keever. Ms. Young?
Yes. Can you go back to the slide of the number of personnel who have been tested and tested positive for COVID? I think there was six personnel that were tested. And is there a status on their current status? Are they back at school now, or are they quarantined? Or do we know the status of each of these individuals?
The most recently reported case, which I believe... And it's blurry from here on the screen, I'm sorry. But I believe the most recently reported case included a staff member at War Hill High School.
Right, I see that.
Okay, so...
I mean, I'm looking at Clara Bird Baker up there. That was reported the beginning of September. Is that person back at work?
My knowledge, that is correct.
Okay, because I think that would be helpful if we knew the current status, if they were in quarantine or if they were at work. That would... Because I think sometimes we get the feeling that somebody, when they test positive, that it's a dire death situation, and that's not always the case. Anyway, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cox?
Be careful.
Sorry, I just twisted my ankle there. So I just spoke with the Public Information Officers from our neighboring school divisions and also left a message for the Virginia Department of Health. One of the concerns about that is that it helps make someone personally identifiable. If you say when they left and that they're back, it might help identify that person to their colleagues or to people in the building.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't realize it was a privacy issue, but I just wouldn't... I mean, you can't say they're back at work generally, or no?
Again, we're looking into that to make sure. So again, this was a measure that we... A step that we took to help give context for how far or how long ago some of the cases were reported. Again, it also depends on how long someone must either be sick... How long they're sick or how long they have to quarantine after. So it could vary from time to time. But that is something that we're looking into based on recommendations by the board.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Mr. Dowell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wonder if, as a part of the Return to Learn update, if you can share the progress that's being made at Clara Bird and Laura Lane. And I know that we are laying the Phase 2 reopening at those schools. And I think that, looking at some of the emails, there's a misconception that this kind of snuck up on us or that we knew about it and that nothing was happening. I just think that that's not entirely accurate. So maybe if we could speak to that?
Mr. Keever's been very involved in monitoring that whole piece. I'm going to hand it back over to you, Mr. Keever.
Thank you. It was not a situation that we allowed to fester. It was a situation that became kind of prominent in our thinking at the end of September. And we started, oh gosh, we started the process of addressing that as soon as it came to our attention in both buildings, and have worked with an outside contractor as well as our own internal folks to remediate the scenario and try to re-prepare those buildings for in-person instruction as soon as possible. It became clear to us at the end of last week that we just wouldn't be ready to bring students back on the 26th of October, and in consultation with Dr. Heron, felt it was most appropriate to push that back to November the 9th.
Thank you. And so these things are clearly front of your mind, a center point of attention at these two schools, and, you know, it came to a head, excuse me, it came to a head at the last week at a decision point.
That is correct. It would have been our goal, of course, to have all of the schools moving forward at the elementary level together. No question.
One of the key decision points was not just the mitigation of the issue, there was also the teacher readiness, because to really have the rooms totally back to normal, a lot of the teacher materials and setup had to be taken down, and therefore our teachers needed the time to put it back together again for in-person learning. And with teaching virtually, getting ready for in-person learning, it just wasn't possible. The stress level of teachers shot up very quickly, and we wanted to respond to that immediately to protect our teachers as well. So health mitigation and teacher stress both really played into the delay for the two schools. We're really grateful for parents for being so patient, as we've had to delay those two particular schools in coming back. But we will be ready in two weeks' time, two weeks later.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Additional questions or comments? Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, just a couple of things that are fairly disparate on the back of Mr. Dowell's questions there. I mean, we, these weren't decisions that were made necessarily by in-house WJCC personnel. We had outside experts looking at the situation of those two schools, right?
Relative to the indoor air quality pieces?
Yes.
Absolutely. We did make the decision to postpone the return.
Right.
But that was related to all of the work that was being done by external contractors trying to help us through the process.
Right, just so we just make sure the public is aware that this, we had such a matter of experts engaged in this decision, and I understand from my other life that when you have an air conditioning system designed for 900 people and you have two in the building, it's just not necessarily works as well as you'd like for it to be. So, and I appreciate, I appreciate that information. So Mrs. Young took you back here, can I take you back one more slide?
Sure. Well, I'm not driving the slides. Ms. Cox, can you take us back a slide? There you go. Sorry.
So, you know, we had the core indicators for James City County and for Williamsburg, and that works real well for the state and the peninsula, because, you know, they're disparate municipalities. But if we were to sum those together, like our school system is, what would those numbers look like?
I could give you a better answer, Mr. Kelly, at some point tomorrow afternoon. On a weekly basis, we receive from the Peninsula Health District updated information for the Peninsula School Divisions. They do combine those two pieces together when they report out to us. They share that with us in advance of a meeting that we have, as Dr. Heron has referenced before, with the Peninsula Superintendents and the Health Department. I wouldn't want to take a stab at combining that for you right now, but we would be willing to share that information after we receive it.
Yeah, I just think that would be more indicative of what our situation is, you know, with Williamsburg City having fewer population than James City County. A case in the city makes a much more of an impact than several cases in the county, and just be kind of, because we're combined, it just means to do that. And then, and the other comment too is, you know, as we can tell from our citizen comments tonight and the email that we get, there is no consensus in this community as far as what we should be doing. I mean, we get, we get, you know, "Don't go back to school," we get "Why aren't you in school?" and everywhere in between. And one of, and I think, I think it's important to understand too, that, you know, we're trying to do the CDC's social distancing, and the first problem that comes in a kid's school life is on the bus. And we have, we have a certain inventory of buses, and, you know, when we're talking about 26 kids on a bus, it takes a lot of buses to transport all these kids to a school. And so I just want to make sure the public appreciates that that's the first problem we have. And then once we get them in school, you know, class changes in high schools and middle schools, and trying to do all that in the schools is a real challenge, and we just have to make sure that we've thought through that and really understand what our, what the challenges and the solutions are in front of us before we head down that path. So I appreciate the good work that's being put in by everybody, the administration and the staff, and certainly all of our teachers and parents, and I know how much of a burden this is to our parents and our students. Are the teachers ready for next Monday? I mean, do they have all the resources they need? Are they, are they in a position to be ready to go back to school?
I believe so. I think we do have the resources in place. I know we've been in touch with principals and through teachers to get ready. We certainly will, are reaching out again this week, and Mr. Walker's visiting every school again this week to ask questions and make sure we have everything in place. But certainly would encourage teachers who, if they don't have the resources, to certainly reach, reach out to us, for sure.
I've heard from several teachers, not just one, but several teachers about, you know, some of the learning management systems, and that they're concerned their principals aren't aware of what's going on, and it's just creating a lot of stress that I think we need to make sure that we're resolving and getting taken care of, because, you know, it's, next Monday's a big step for the school system as we try to go back towards normal, and I just want to make sure that our teachers are fully prepared to meet that challenge, and have some concerns right now that we're not.
It is a complicated endeavor, no question, for sure, from the perspective of teachers, and having a student in a different division who is learning online while other students are back in the classroom. I recognize the real strain that the teaching staff, wherever they are, are under. So I think that's something that's been top of mind for Mr. Walker and the elementary school principals, and I think it will continue to be as we, as we walk closer to the 26th.
Yeah, because this is, this whole paradigm has been a strain to the system.
Yes, sir.
It's been a strain to the families, it's been a strain to parents, and certainly a strain to the teachers in the amount of effort that they're having to put in to teach a whole new paradigm almost immediately. And so now we're going to go in, so from straight virtual, we're going to go to half virtual, and so we're going to a different paradigm and a different way of delivering education is just a lot of, it's a lot of pressure and stress on our teaching staff. And we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to put them in a position to succeed and lower their stress as much as possible, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to echo what Mr. Kelly said about this slide. Whereas I think it's great to show the two indicators by locality, I also think a combined look would be good, because if those two bottom bars, if there's a community-based testing event, that could wildly, in any given week, that could change that from green to red and back to green very easily. And then anytime you're looking at a rate in a locality with the population of Williamsburg size, it can also change drastically from day to day. So I think in that top bar, when you think of population size in the city, I think you have to look at trends, because it can change dramatically if, like Jim said, one or two cases in the city can be equal to many, many more cases in the county. And then again, if there's those community-based testing events, that can change that bottom bar, so.
If I may though, I just, I want to remind the group and remind the viewing public as well, that this data is populated over a 14-day scenario.
Right.
So it, while it changed today, it's related to the data over the course of a two-week period of time?
Right.
Okay.
But again, those events, I think, can have an impact on that.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just, I think a combined look is probably a good thing to consider. And then the other thing I'd like to talk about is just sort of indicators. We talked about what indicators guys are looking at to determine whether it's safe to go into school, and that's awesome, and the indicators that you're using in terms of mitigation strategies in the buildings and on buses, as Mr. Kelly mentioned, and then indicators that we're looking at in terms of what teachers are doing in the classroom to prepare. But at some point, I'd like to, this isn't a question, it's just a request, I think we need to start looking at student learning indicators, whether that's attendance and indicators of student engagement, whether it's indicators of how many assignments are being completed, or what success rates are in terms of, you know, grades or any assessments. At some point, we have to start looking at what our students are experiencing and how they're performing. And so looking at their educational, social, emotional wellbeing, any other signs of engagement and wellbeing. You know, one indicator we're looking at is meals, you know, but I think we need to unpack that a little bit more, because I still don't think we have a sense of the delta between what was happening before school shutdown and what's happening now. But there are a lot of services and outcomes that we had before March that we can't possibly expect to be at that same level. But I think having an indicator of where we are and how far we are from where we want to be in terms of student achievement is something that we need to start looking at. And I don't know when that's appropriate, but I hope it happens sometime in the not-too-distant I think we need to start knowing as a community kind of where we are, and so I'd like to start thinking about looking at that. And I'd also like to just follow up on what Mr. Kelly said about the comments we got today, and just reiterate, you know, that there is a lot of disagreement out in the community, and the solutions that we've come up with are remarkable, but they are nonetheless imperfect, and they're imperfect for everybody, but I support you, Dr. Heron, I support everything you've been doing, I support the decisions you've been making, and I appreciate what you're doing, what your staff is doing, what the teachers are doing. I appreciate what parents are doing and students. It's really, it's really tough. We're all making the best of it, but it is, it's harder. Everything is harder, and there's no perfect answer. Thank you for all your.
Cook, additional comments, questions?
Yes, I've been talking about something that Ms. Cook brought up. One of the things that we knew that at the beginning of this school year, that students were going to be brought in in small groups and to be tested for academic gains and losses, are we going to be able to get a report on that at some point?
Yes, ma'am. The testing window is still open right now, and we have, I think, over 70% of our students have had, have been tested in pre-K through 2. And so when that window closes, then we'll get a better sense of how students are doing right now, certainly in the lower grades.
Okay, thank you, because that's, I think, that's a big concern that I have for the loss of time face-to-face for these students. So thank you.
Ms. Young, additional comments or questions?
More a comment. I just think, I think we have to be careful when, you know, I understand the need for assessment and seeing how students are doing academically, but I also think that we also need to be patient about that, because they're, they're dealing with a variety of factors as well, not the least of which is just trying to get through the day, day by day, every day, you know, is Groundhog Day. And I just, I think it's very important to not put another level of stress on these kids and the teachers, that's all.
Dr. Beers?
Dr. Beers, I, just if I could follow up, I agree with you, and so I guess my request isn't prescriptive in nature, but I do think there are indicators that we already have that maybe, that wouldn't add a layer of stress or even any act, any additional activity, but just some sort of sense of how kids are doing, whether it's engagement or attendance, yeah, that's all.
It was more caution.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, sir. Yeah, I do.
Kelly?
The other, other level of stress we have in addition to achievement is funding. Has, have we gotten any better word from the state as far as September 30 enrollments and how the state funding's going to work and how that'll all roll down to us?
There's no definitive answer yet, although there has been some hope given to superintendents that we won't lose all of the money associated with EDM. So they're looking at numbers right now before they make any decision, but there's, there's some suggestion that there may be some funding already at the Virginia Department of Education that would make up for some of that funding.
Do we have a feel for our enrollment?
We are.
That we're ready to talk about?
We'll talk about in detail at the next meeting, but I believe we're down considerably, I want to say 670 students.
So, so, yeah, that's roughly what, 5%, which is
Correct.
Close to 5% of our state funding, and, you know, we've already made teacher commitments and contracts, and so that's, that's a significant worry. Thank you.
Additional questions?
I would just like to add, and I echo Ms. Cook's comments and Ms. Young's comments of callers tonight, I'm particularly concerned about feedback students have given us, that this year, our studies seem harder, more difficult, that student grades are suffering. We heard callers share that information with us tonight. I've heard from individual students as well as parents. So as a board member, I would, I would like to have a sense of, are our students doing better, worse, the same? I understand it's different, but just to help, to help us understand how they are faring.
Thank you, Mr. Kiefer. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to Board Matters and Requests, 11.1. I'll start with Mr. Dowell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have just one item to bring to the floor, I guess. I was privileged enough to spend a morning with Congressman Whitman, and we had a Zoom meeting with some Federal Reserve staffers and a whole host of different conversations. But one thing that I wanted to bring to the community's attention was this investinwhatsnext.org website that is put together by the Federal Reserve Board. And really, what really interested me about it was that it really does a good job of engaging 8th grade, 9th grade, 10th grade to look at what they would like to do as a career and what their passions, what their desires are, and then how to get there. It's a free course. Our teachers, our counselors, it's available to them as well. It's available to parents, but specifically for students to really look at, you know, what their passions, their desires to work in the community, how to get there, how to budget for it, how to plan for it, how to get to college or to trade school, and how, really just how to plan for their future. So I just wanted to share that, investinwhatsnext.org. One other item I do want to touch on, because I had it circled more than five times, and it's been discussed here at length by my colleagues, grades, pass/fail, what our students are dealing with, how they're, how they've adjusted and how they're coping. That was going to be an SBQ of mine in this next week, but clearly it seems like everybody wants to, wants to know what's on all of our minds, and so I just want to throw my hat into that conversation, so I would be interested in seeing with the metrics that we already have available to us, what our students are doing, how they're faring in this, and, you know, what the trend seems to be. And then headaches. Headaches was one of those things that I circled as well from public comment, and I do know from experience in my own circle that that is one area that students that I know of are being challenged, staring at a screen day in and day out, not just with the instruction, but with the, with the study and the building, you know, reports and such. So just the physical toll that is taking on our students. And I don't know how we go about, you know, looking at that piece of our students' experience, but, you know, it's, it's a concern, and it's been brought to our attention, and I've seen it in my own circle, and I'm sure many of us have, have heard of it as well. All the more reason to, and I know this is your desire, Dr. Heron and your staff, to get us back to, you know, in-person learning as safely and as reasonably as possible, as soon as possible. But I thank you for your leadership as well. We were missing not saying that I had the, and I'm going to wrap this up, I went longer than I intended to, but I did have an opportunity to get out there and talk with parents this past week, and I got a very different, very different take on what they have been experiencing in their homes with their students and with virtual learning. The vast majority had nothing but positive things to say about this experience, though it's been challenging. They had nothing but positive things to say about their teachers, counselors, the availability of staff, and perhaps they were just telling me that because they were surprised that I was at their door, knocking on their door. But I took them to be very sincere in that. We heard a different kind of experience from our parents and students that called in today that clearly we're going to be taking seriously as well. But I just wanted to, you know, share that, that the vast majority that I interacted with last week, you know, had a very different experience, and so I'd really like to see and I'd be interested in seeing what grades look like and that all, that whole other piece, the experience piece for our students.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank the citizens who called today, and just remind everybody that if your, you know, comments got cut off, please email, you know, please send them to either Ms. Surza, our School Board clerk, and she can forward them to everybody, or directly to the School Board, you know, because we do want to hear the entirety of your comments. And then I also wanted to thank the city and the county for their approval of the year-end spending request in a really difficult budget year. It's very much appreciated to know that we have the ability to do what we need to do and have the funds to do that, so. So, and then I know, Dr. Heron, next meeting, we'll look at your CIP recommendation hand-in-hand with the enrollment figures. But following up on Mr. Kelly's question, at some point, I'd like, I guess, kind of the governors, or the budget that's on the governor's desk and what's in that as it relates to what you project with enrollment. So just, we have kind of a whole picture with enrollment and money and how that all connects sometimes too. It would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Mrs. Young?
Yes, I don't have much to say tonight, except I just want to continue to thank our teachers for the tremendous work they're doing. And as we move into having our K-3 kiddos back in school, I hope that that's going to relieve some of the stress because that's the one thing that I hear from parents is trying to keep a kindergartner engaged or a first grader and how difficult it is. So hopefully this is going to alleviate some of the stress. And again, I do want to let the community know that decisions are not made lightly in this division, that Dr. Heron and her staff take a look at all of these things before implementing any change. And we understand there are concerns. I think that's going to continue. But can, I was just thinking today, as I was out driving, it's hardly noticeable since the day before COVID. There's just as many cars on the road, just as many people out and about. So I think we are coming to terms with this. And I think eventually we will be, come to terms with it in our schools too, and it will be handled. So just hang in there, everybody, and thank you.
Young, Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I'd like to echo a couple of things that Ms. Dowell said, and in my experience as well, talking to parents, is that the, most of the parents I've talked to recognize the challenges that we all face today because of COVID-19, but also appreciate the work that has gone into that virtual learning. And they support that. I know there are some that are not as crazy about it. But I think, you know, one of my, one of the parents I talked to said that, you know, her kids were already pretty tech-savvy to begin with. And they've sort of moved into it quite naturally and actually enjoyed it. So I hope we continue to do some of those kinds of things. The comment by Mrs. Young, I have a question about, I guess, that joint meeting. I know that Tommy Norman is supposed to be there. What about, are other local representatives from the General Assembly going to be there as well? The ones who are Democrats who might have a more of the governor's ear in terms of things that they're going to, that he's trying to put together or propose?
All of our legislators were invited. They were all invited. Mr. Norman has the availability to definitely log in at that time. But we've extended the Ring or the Zoom invitation to all of our legislators. And it's my hope we'll be able to record this meeting. So if they're not able to log in at that designated time, it will be archived and they'll have access to it later because it will be chock full of important information to help folks understand the budgeting process and benchmarking and funding.
Yeah, I think it is really important to keep abreast of things, especially information that we can get from our own local representatives. I very much appreciate that. And also, once again, recognize the real challenges for every teacher trying to do this virtually, online. And it is, as I said before, I've talked to more. And I've also seen and talked to teachers in other areas around the Commonwealth. And that is one of the things that they all seem to recognize is it's probably the hardest way right now for them to do that kind of instruction, but they're doing it. And we'll see, you know, eventually we'll see how that, how that boots in terms of the academic achievement of students. But, and again, you know, you owe my three words. And I'm saying this to some of those parents, is you have, you know, you have to be patient. One of the things I think we lose sight of, kids tend to be far more adaptive than we give them credit for and very much, very often more adaptive than parents or other adults. And so I think that's important to keep in mind. And the other thing is being responsible. Continue to follow the very same things that we're going to be doing as we open up those schools again. Everybody needs to do that. And just continue to have tremendous amount of respect for our teachers, for our administrators, superintendent, everybody that's involved in trying to get back to normal, however we define ultimately what normal is going to be.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Along with Mrs. Young said about more cars being on the road. I got behind a yellow school bus the other day and it just made me smile. So I was kind of happy, happy to actually see that. Along with Mrs. Cook, I'd like to echo the thanks to our funding partners for the year-end spending plan and their approval of that. You know, as we continue forward, we're going to have more budget challenges and appreciate their support of the school system. I'd like to thank Dr. Beers for his service as WHRO Chair and having one of the best titles as a former chair. Something I just think we should consider about, I'm not really sure I'm putting an opinion out right now, but something I want us to think about as anonymous citizen comments during our meetings and as whether that's appropriate and something that we want to do or if we want to request people to state their name because I think that's part of our SOP and I think we might want to think about that. I'd like to echo everybody's comments about, you know, the thanks for the hard work that our students are putting in, our parents. I know it's a lot of burden, a lot of us being asked of our families in our community as well as, you know, our teachers are just working so unbelievably hard. And so the support of the administrators too. So I'd just like to, like, as a, like to express my thanks to all of those folks for all the hard work that they're putting in. And, you know, in addition to doing the virtual learning thing, you know, just the weight of where we are as a society and where we are at times and it's just, you know, in all ways. And I do echo the words of the, some of the board members and the folks who've spoke tonight about virtual learning and how our teachers are doing and how they've answered the challenge and how they're really making that work as best they can. But at the end of the day, the teacher wants to be in front of the students. The students want to be in front of the teacher. And so, you know, that's where the goal, where we want to be. And that's what teachers want, that's what students want, that's what parents want, that's what families want. We just need to keep working towards that, which brings me to next week on where we start into Path Two. It's an exciting week. We're going to have kids back in school and classrooms and buses on the road. But it's also a little scary. I mean, it's, hopefully, we can, we do what, this all works and we can, everybody stays healthy and be more successful. October is, as it seems like every month is, many months. Two things it is, it is, is Bullying Prevention Month. Our kids aren't in school, but that doesn't mean that they don't have, they're not faced with bullying, with social media and all the rest of it that's out there. So make sure aware of this. But it's also Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I got my little pink tie on just for that. And, you know, my thoughts go out to all those who are fighting and fought that battle as well as all families who are suffering from cancer. It's a scary and challenging disease. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I have to say ditto. I want to piggyback on what my colleagues have said. I too had a chance to meet with several parents last week and the conversation was very similar to what Ms. Dowell said, Mr. Dowell said. While parents recognize things aren't perfect and there have been glitches and their preference would be to be in a classroom, they also thanked me and asked me to share with my colleagues that they're pleased with our decision and the amount of effort our staff and teachers and administrators have put into creating a learning environment for their students. And was also able to Zoom in with Ms. Hummel and attend a WJCEA Teachers Executive Board meeting where those teachers did share a lot of the concerns that Mr. Kelly mentioned tonight with just still lots of questions and, you know, what is the first day of school on the 26th going to look like? And they've made it clear that they've had communication with Mr. Walker and Dr. Heron. And so I thank staff for, you know, trying to continue to support our teachers and help them make that transition because there's a lion's share of work that's been done and will need to continue to be done in order to support our students. And then too, wanted to thank our funding partners for approving our year-end spending so we're able to continue to support our students, which is in a uniquely and different way that we had anticipated. Moving on to our upcoming events, Student Advisory Committee, I'm assuming is meeting virtually on October 28 at 3:00 via Zoom. Policy Committee is meeting on the 29th at 8:00 a.m. And then 24th Century Care and Ready Advisory Committee is meeting at 3:30 on November 11. And the Special Education Advisory Committee is meeting on November 12. We will have our special joint meeting next Monday, 8:00 a.m. via Zoom. We'll have a closed session on November 10 at 6:00 p.m. here in the annex, followed by a work session at 6:30. We'll also have a closed session on November 17. We will have public comment on the CIP at 6:30 and followed by a regular meeting. Additional comments, feedback?